Because originally, they were proposing, everybody was going to go to .gov. Instead of .org. Everybody who was .org. was going to switch to .gov. We no longer have to do that, as high tech is, setting that up.
Yeah, that's a ploss.
Which is a ploss. And if I'm not mistaken, Rick, there's like, first quote, about $12,000, and that's just in hardware?
Um, might be a little bit more on that. Let's see if they take off 20 of it. So yeah, it's probably about 18, 19,000 with the hardware.
Just in hardware?
Yes.
So computers?
Well, that's just for the server.
Servers.
Yep.
Sorry, servers.
Yep.
RAM upgrades, drives.
And everything in there will have a five-year warranty, so that's parts, labor. You just call us if there's ever a problem. Hopefully, we already notify, know about it before, with us monitoring the equipment, and we come out and handle everything.
Okay. Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
The board have any more discussion? Can we put a motion together?
I'll make a motion to approve two high-tech quotes as presented.
As presented, just said?
Yep.
You got support? Part by DeGiorgio. There's no other discussion. Can we get a roll call, please, Emery?
Yes.
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 Thanks, Rick. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Drive careful, huh? Watch out for the cars. Um, let's move on to item 7C, which is our Dietland SLU for 78837 Harvest Lane. It's parcel number 1401-26-100-010. I think Mr. Dietland is here.
Hello. Yeah, Bob Dietland, 78837 Harvest Lane. I brought in a variance request to build a second garage on my, my property in the sideyard due to a hardship in the backyard to the planning board last week. I was approved there. Um, it, it, it otherwise meets all the, the rules and regulations. It's also working closely with our HOA board, architecture board there, and, and they're bought off on it as well.
Um, I know Mr. Dietland, he happens to be one of my neighbors. I actually belong to the same HOA where the special land uses are located. Um, I did come to the planning commission, I did speak on behalf of the HOA. We do have a letter from the president of our HOA. Um, we do have a, an architectural committee in our HOA in order to, um, you know, we have stipulations and guidelines in which we allow, and where we allow to have somebody build a building, and what the materials are made out of. Mr. Dietland's, um, plans are, it has farly exceeded exact, uh, anything that we've had in our guidelines. Um, got 100% approval from our HOA, and we look forward to him building the building he's going to build. Um, it's going to definitely add value and character to our community, so. And then, um, his request is to build a, how many square feet is it total?
Uh, I think it's 1,292 or just.
And he's allowed up to 2,700 square feet in a five-acre parcel, so he's falling underneath the perimeter, the parameters of what we allow there. He has no other buildings on site. Um, there is a hardship, um, it's, can't really, it's hard to say or to see here, but his property in his backyard drops off at about, I want to say, three feet, probably 10 feet, you would probably go out if I'm not mistaken. So there's no way you can build it in the rear yard, and then actually adjacent house next door to him has a mirroring image of what he's looking to do here, the sideyard accessory building. So, I mean, if there's nothing else that you wanted to add, I would, this time entertain a motion.
Yeah. I, I would add one more item like that I think is relevant, is that the, um, the new garage is exactly parallel to where the existing garage is. So there's, it's already, you know, that far up front, so it'll be nice-looking, I think. And it does exceed what our requirements are in terms of, it'll be 100% brick, I think you said.
Yep.
And, uh, with all the color matching, so. It's more than we require at the planning. And that was the basis for the planning commissions, that as well as the other things Mike said. It's a reason that the planning commission is recommending approval.
Okay. So at this time, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve special land use for Robert Dietland for 78837 Harvest Lane, parcel number 14-01-09-201-009.
Second.
Second by Emery. And if there's no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. All set. Thanks, uh.
Thank you.
Have a good day. We'll move on to item 7D, which is our Miri zoning. Also from the planning commission. We have the applicant here, or the agent.
Good evening, Dan Walker, on behalf of my client, Jessica Miri. You guys already are pretty well aware, uh, seeking to rezone her parcel from 01 to C3. We're at the planning commission last week, and, uh, we did the impact study. I don't know if, uh, you were in possession of that or not.
I do have it here. Everybody else received a PDF copy of it.
That's good. Yeah, I mean, other, other than that, uh, you know, there were several concerns brought up, uh, at the planning commission meeting. We'll briefly touch on the public comment portions of it, but comments made about people in the million-dollar houses across the street, they weren't there, to the best of my knowledge. There were no emails or other correspondence given from anybody that lives in there stating their objection to it. Uh, the comment was made that Bruce Township has two gas stations. Uh, Bruce Township has zero gas stations, actually. Over and over again, uh, over the course of months at this point, I've heard the argument, we moved to a rural area, and that's the way we want to keep it. That is the most dense part of your township. Literally, the condos to the south share a wall, as a matter of fact. And there is a large parcel, Zone C2, right in front of the Mobile Home Park, which also abuts the condos. That could be developed at any time. It's already Zone C2, so it's 800 feet from this property. You know, one of, uh, the comments was made about the, the level of service decreasing. That was only in one direction. Had the planner been able to review it, he may have been able to point that out to the commission, that one direction, it dropped from a level of service of a D to an E, but that that could be fixed by a light change. However, two of the other directions actually improved. Comment was made about the water table being impacted. Mike, I know you probably know, Frank, you probably know as well, de-watering for one single commercial unit probably isn't going to do a whole lot. Where you run into the issue is if you're putting in a development that has a bunch of residential houses that all have a well, similar to what happened in Sorrel Woods with, um, Cloverfield, that's where the de-watering, the lower water table happens. And then the noise problem. You live on M53. You know, there's, there's not much that this development is per se going to add to the noise. You're not going to have trucks jaybreaking to go into a gas station. That's going to happen behind you, so I will leave it to you.
I, I can start out, but I'm going to turn it over to Emery. I'm just going to give maybe my opinion a little bit. If anybody else has got any comments. I mean, obviously, I watched the meeting that took place at the planning commission, tried to follow this. This was a rezoning that came in front of the planning commission back, uh, August of 2023, if I'm not mistaken.
Roughly, it sounds right.
It was, uh, discussed at that time. I know there was public comment and a public hearing at the time, and I think we did have some people from, uh, Pine Creek Estates that did show up at that meeting, but there wasn't on there that night. We are looking at a piece of land, it is currently farmland. I think it was originally zoned to 01, which is very restricted use, and if you look at the usages under 01, very limited, and a lot of it's basically on offices. And our offices, since COVID, offices has not been a very good thing, a lot of working from home, a lot of the office spaces are not being used up because they're sitting vacant. But being it's such, it is a basically limited use with indoor accessories usually a customary incidental and primary use, I'm not really sure, public utility offices, professional service offices, and then anything under the permitted, uh, ordinance in this immediate budding residential district, which is kind of hard for me to understand. But then, and anything else would be under a special age. So it is very limited. I don't personally feel, I mean, that it's a great area for residential development, you know, which is just going to be basically to the south of it. I don't know of anybody that would want to really put a house on the corner of a freeway and another very busy highway. I do have some differences in regards to the impact study, and I've shared this with Emery, and I mentioned that if it was a medical facility, or if it was a, um, office with multi-medical facility, maybe a dental office, maybe chiropractor's office, I feel that any of that traffic that would be coming to a facility like that would be coming from outside of the area. I mean, you could be living in Macomb Township, have your chiropractor out there, or your dentist's office there, possibly it would bring increased traffic to the area. But I think if it did become, if it was going to get rezoned to C3, and it was going to be a gas station, I don't think anybody's going to be coming from like Macomb Township or Washington Township, go out of their way, even from the Village of Romeo to go to that gas, the gas station. So it does show that there's a 20% increase in traffic volume if it was going to be a service station. I think it's going to be most pass, most of it's going to be pass-through traffic, but that's just kind of my opinion. We got 20,000 cars a day in each direction, I think, on a good day going down Van Dyke. And I think they're looking at the numbers if it was going to be a service station, and the, I think the pass-through traffic was very minimal as compared to the number of cars that are going on there. So I think there's a lot of things that the township's got to look at as far as, um, maybe the possibility of rezoning. The planning commission, we have seven members on our planning commission, I think that they did do their homework, they all did seem to speak from the, um, traffic study, they all did, um, have knowledge of it, and, um, it was voted, it was denied by a vote of seven and no, if I'm not mistaken. But it was, we have good members on the planning commission, and, um, I think that, uh, you know, it still might need to be looked at a little bit closer. I think that the possibility of having it zoned 01 may, um, be something we need to look at. I mean, obviously, you know, um, offices are just not going to be there, but maybe we can look at it in a different zoning, maybe not so much as the C3, something we don't have currently in our, our area, but maybe somewhere's meet in between. We've given up a lot of our residential to, I mean, a lot of our commercials being used up for, and our manufacturing for residential developments. We got another possible two pieces of our commercial that would be looked at as far as being switched over to residential. And the township does need to keep a good balance as far as our commercial and our residential to, to pay our bills. I mean, it's just going to be as simple as that, so. I think it's all things that we need to consider, but, um, I'm going to let Emery finish it off.
Yeah. The PC did receive the impact study about a week before.
And she's speaking.
I know from my own vantage point, I went through it cover to cover, except for the part with all the detail done, the traffic, the actual counts. In my estimation, the impact study was, it was complete, it hit all the points that were supposed to be included, so it was very thorough. We actually spent about 40 minutes on this subject, not counting the public hearing. So it was quite, it was about a third of our meeting. The applicant's consultant did come, she was the, I believe, the main author of the study. She was very thorough, she talked about 12 minutes. Uh, and what resonated with me is that at one point, she stated that in making these decisions about land use impact, that it's based on everything that could be in this C3 zoning district, because it's nothing that's defined. It was an open request for, open-ended request for C3. That's my wording, open-ended. Our planner spoke for, uh, quite a while, and he mainly went over the criterion that the planning commission needs to look at when they're making a decision on rezoning. It's the same criterion we always look at. Of note, he also said that from his perspective, uh, the impacts are going to be highly dependent on the ultimate use of the land, uh, which of course, we don't know at this point. All of the PC members spoke about their comments and concerns. They ranged to several different things. There were traffic concerns based on some of the uses that could occur. The plant, the impact statement actually included a sheet, a breakdown of what would be the possibilities based on today's traffic volumes, what could, uh, happen by way of what the, the consultant called pass-through traffic. That means somebody's who's coming, uh, I think I got the words right, they're going to be driving by there anyway, so they just stop. Versus the additional traffic that you might get with some of the types of C3, um, development, where they're coming specifically for that, uh, the business. I happen to have made the motion, uh, which were, I think, incorporated the concerns that were expressed. Uh, there were several reasons for the denial, recommended denial. I'm happy to go through them. In my estimation, the major one was the fact that it was an open-ended request for C3. And when you look at the wide range of things that are either permissible or special land use opportunities in C3, they're, they really range. Some of them are more, again, my word, intense usage than others.
So Joe did comment on the impact study, or the impact, even though you didn't see the study itself?
Joe's comments were, after he listened to the consultant for the, the applicant, she spoke about, uh, again, I think it was close to 12 minutes, and he heard what she had to say. She had every, you know, hit all the high points. And then the majority of his time was spent discussing, um, the relevant, I think there are 10 factors the PC looks at, um, when making a recommendation for rezoning.
I agree with a lot of things that both you and Mike talked about, but what I find disturbing is, um, the owner of the property came to the planning commission back in August of 2023 and was asked to do an impact study.
It was in, just to make the correction, it was in November.
Okay, November 20.
Yeah.
At some point, they came asking, and they were, they were told they needed to do an impact study. That impact study, from my understanding, cost somewhere between the neighborhood of 15 and 20,000 dollars. And for the, our principal planner to just say, "I didn't read it yet," that's pretty disrespectful, I think. I think he should have read it, taken a look at it, and then given his opinion based on what he read, not based on what somebody is telling him. Even though it's maybe the same thing, but there might have been some things that she didn't say that he would have read in that report. And just for clarification, because I know there's some grandstanding going on, I am for keeping Bruce Township ruled. However, I do believe that we have valuable property along M53 that needs to be looked at, and maybe it, it should be looked at during this time when we put our master plan together, where maybe some things do need to be rezoned somewhat, where we can capture commercial property tax base and still keep the township ruled. End of story.
Well, can I come in?
Yep.
All right, so when I first was looking through the paperwork, um, my only concern as I'm looking through this is it's, as Emery said, it's open-ended. My concern when I'm looking at that list of, you know, how many potential things could go in there, I would like to see an actual plan of what you're looking to put there before I say yes, I would rezone that for you. That would be my only, looking through all of this, that was my number one concern when I was reading it.
Totally fair. So to several of those points, uh, you know, my client isn't going to be the person that develops this. I can tell you from now going on three years of fielding calls, if it were rezoned, it's going to be a gas station. I've gotten not one single other call for anything other than that. Right now, your zoning only allows for a gas station under C3. So that entire impact study was done under the presumption that it would be a gas station, which by every planner's estimate, that was the most intense use available on the C3. In my time, and I think all of you know it, was somewhat lengthy around here, when somebody would come for a rezoning to the planning commission, they'd come with an open book, with the expectation that the planning commission, or now you, would say, "Hey, we're not really feeling C3, there's too many things on here, what are your thoughts on that?" And that's kind of your signal for, okay, go back and, you know, offer up the conditions, which we were fully prepared to do. I, I don't think that in anybody's estimation, a lot of the things on C3 were something that, you know, I, I would even want to see, even though I don't live here anymore. I get that. So my frustration lies in that, you know, that didn't happen, and, you know, yes, maybe there was 40 minutes spent on the topic. Interesting that that's known to be kind of one of the arguments, but that being said, you know, we spent 55 minutes at that meeting talking about a pole barn, and the applicant answered more and more and more questions, and we had a certified planner here who put it together and never brought back up to answer another question. I feel like the motion was written before the meeting started, and having been on, in your seat, that's wrong. Four years on that commission, you don't pre-write a motion, one way or the other.
Mike, can I respond?
Yeah, I think, go ahead.
The motion was not written.
Okay.
Before the meeting. I have bullet points, both positive aspects of voting to recommend, and rezoning as well as positive aspects for what could be reasons for, um, not recommending. So I look at those, I add to them as the meeting is happening. The motion was not written beforehand, just to be clear.
Okay. Bullet points, motion, all right.
She shared some bullet points, also in the fact that it was for a recommendation to approve, so both ways she had bullet.
I understand, I, I just, okay. But I mean, you, your, your application for rezoning, like Frank touched on, most of that money goes to the planner for his review. He didn't even have it. So even our planner said.
He had it. Just, he had it, he just.
He didn't have it at that meeting, whatever. He hadn't reviewed it.
There's proof that it was sent.
Yeah, oh, no, I understand that. But, you know, yeah, she gave a 12-minute, as she called it, 30,000-foot overview of 155-page document. So I guess, I guess, you know, what I would have asked at that meeting, had the opportunity presented itself, um, even though several members decided to talk about what it is that, that they would want to see there, um, what, if it's not this, what do you want? You know, under 01 SLU, you can put pretty much anything that's under C2. I mean, you can, it's an SLU, but it's there, and it says including but not limited to. So, you know, it's, what it's doing is it's, it's putting that stopgap for her to sell it to somebody who's then now going to have to come and get an SLU, rather than just saying, "Hey, it's already zoned C2," or "It's zoned C3 with these conditions attached to it," so that that doesn't have to enter their mind, and that's my job, right? Is, is to make it as easy for her and, um, you know, try to, try to get her what she can for it. And being objective, as objective as I can, kind of what Mike alluded to, 01 just, it's just not going to work there. It's not, it's dead and gone.
Well, it's on our agenda about updating our master plan if it passes. I encourage every resident in the, in Bruce Township to attend our meetings that we're going to have and get their input and find out what they want there. And they, they'll decide.
Meanwhile, does this need to go back to planning? Because they should hear what Joe has to say about the, um, impact study report.
Like they said, Joe, Joe's not a voting member of the board.
Yeah, but.
He's only going to counsel.
To offer opinion of.
He offers factual information, and that's, that was given at the prior meeting, for one thing, and the factual information, and if there was any kind of, uh, questions regarding the impact statement, I think that, like we were saying it, I think that the commission seemed to have pretty good knowledge of what the impact statement had said. I mean. If you feel comfortable in your, um, as Asian, your, um, applicant would feel comfortable going back to the planning commission, I've got no issue with it taking back to the planning commission, Dan.
I think that's as fair as it's going to get, and that way, it saves her another application fee, and maybe those conditions and anything else can be discussed at that time.
So I, I, not trying to defend Joe, but so, this was heard in November, so it was heard again on July 8th, if I'm not mistaken. So we went from November all the way to July, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, that's six months' time.
Sounds right.
In order to, um, supply us with an impact statement. I know that the township had granted you an extension because the impact statement, uh, was taking a little bit long than you guys had figured. Um, needless to say that the impact statement, we did receive it on, on July 2nd, just before the 4th of July, five-day holiday weekend, and the meeting was on July 8th. So there wasn't much time to read how many pages, you just mentioned 180 pages of.
It's 155.
155 pages of information before, you know, on a five-day holiday weekend. So I'm not saying, not making excuses for, for Joe, but why couldn't we have gotten it a week, a week earlier or a month earlier? You know what I'm saying? Just so there would have been more time, you know?
Well, your own standards and protocols call for any of that information to be there a week in advance. I was not aware that you guys took the day off prior to the 4th of July, and they were operating under the assumption that it was going to be there on Wednesday morning. You, me, and Dana spoke, they worked late on Monday to get it to you by Tuesday morning. I mean, we knew for two months that 4th of July was coming, and I, I mean.
I, I get it. I mean, I, obviously, I want to give credit to our PC members that, that did read it over the holiday weekend, and.
Sure.
Were, you know, aware of what was going on. I mean, at this point in time, if you would feel that it would be best, your, 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 um, client would be entertained to come back to the PC, we can schedule it again for next month's PC.
Well, it was going to happen one way or the other, whether you denied it tonight and the new application went in tomorrow morning, or it goes back because you kick it back. So, like I said.
You know that the PC can't, I know you mentioned something about the PC coming up with recommendations or conditions, you know, we can't, we can, we can't offer, some you got to offer us that we can't make those recommendations or condition.
I'm well aware.
Emery, what are your thoughts?
No, I'm absolutely fine. If Joe want, we, you guys want to send it back, we want to send it back and have Joe look it over. I just want to be clear that at the meeting that we did have both last year and after, last week after the impact statement, or study came, which was well-done, it was very complete.
I agree.
We had no offers of any kind of conditions.
Correct.
So, just to make it clear.
You are 100% correct.
So at this time, I just, um. So at this time, I just, I think that this should just go back to the PC to be evaluated and looked at one more time. I don't know if I need to make a motion. Table this until after the PC hears it one more time. Motion to table.
No, I think you have to send it back, because if we make a different decision, it can't be tabled here.
Right, so we make a motion to send it back to the Planning Commission.
Right.
I just make, I'll go ahead and make the motion, go ahead and, and the mere rezoning to be heard one more time by the Planning Commission, and for our, would be our August meeting, is that August 8th?
August 7th. I think he's going to be there anyways for his own...
Lucky me.
Are you okay with two of them at the same time?
Yeah, gotta do what we gotta do.
Support.
Second by DiGiorgio. Does anybody else have any other discussion? We got a roll call, please, Amory.
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Boys?
Yes.
DiGiorgio?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Dan, thanks for your patience on this, please let your client know that we appreciate the patience.
Yep.
See you in August, then. Thank you. Moving on to our item 7E, which is our master plan update. So I think you guys have been hearing a lot about updating our master plan. We've got Mr. Bascatoris would like to see more commercial, then we got Mr. Okunuski wants to see less commercial. I know we've got requests in all different directions, we've got residential development going into our commercial zoning, I think that the Planning Commission, if I'm not mistaken, feels that we need to open up the master plan and take a look at what's going on. If there's any corrections or improvements...
That's, that is correct, and it's...
This is coming, this item, agenda item is coming from the Planning Commission for, as to give them approval.
That is correct. It was first mentioned, I want to say, it was either at the February or the April meeting, early this spring. It was presented actually by Mike Tremblay at the time, and agreed by the Planning Commission members that, you know, we've had a lot of, a lot happened with our industrial district and a lot of changes, and needing to make sure that it was sales sized right. At the same time, we've had different requests where people want to replace commercial with residential, and residential with commercial. It's, so there is a lot generated. We haven't looked at the master plan since 2016, so it's been quite a period of time. The commission did vote in favor of requesting the board's assistance in bringing this to the floor. I see that Joe Tangeri has a memo here that actually sets forth the scope of the project. I don't know if you guys want to take some time to look this over, because we did just get this. He's got some costs associated with it, the resources. But basically, just to make it clear to the public, there's certainly been no discussion or intimation that we're going to be doing any unfettered commercial or industrial zoning anywhere. The idea here is we're opening it to make sure that what we, what we have now, if it's right, if it's not right, do we need to add some things? Do we need to delete some things? And whatever we end up with, are they in the right areas where it makes best sense for the township and the residents? So it's, it's really, I think, it's going to be a comprehensive look at it.
That's good. I did read this today, and I, I think it's, I did read this today, and I think, I think it's a great idea, and I, again, I'm going to encourage all our residents in Bruce Township to attend and, and see what they think, and capture their input.
Yes, there will definitely be public hearings. And some of what Joe talked about last week was communication in advance of those, whether it be, you know, in, an enclosure with something on the website, so that people in the community are well aware of what's happening and have an opportunity to input.
I'm going to, everybody, yeah, I have a comment. Been hearing a lot of talk about what people like, they're coming in here and some other stuff, another rezoning they're looking at. They kind of put this map together of the Van Dyck corridor north of 34 Mile Road, and you know, I look at the usage, starting from 34 going north, and it's all, this is all residential zoning. It's all of our, our, our one, I think it's R1 and RS district. And that 34 Mile Road, it starts out as a hospital that owns that property, then it goes to toy products, they have two parcels there, then it's Romeo Rim, then there's a chirogenics place, and then there's a trucking company, then there's a farm field with a pile of rocks, and then there's a, it looks like a modular-style trailer with a, with a barn on it. We got a vacant field that is being used for the Van Hootie Farm, then we have a bug farm, a cricket farm, or whatever, basically ag status, then we got a dog kennel, and then we have some vacant commercial property where the old BJ Saloon was at. There's everything but residential, so I don't even understand how, how does our master plan fit into something like this to put it all in residential when it's currently all being used for everything but residential? That's where my issues are at. And if you take a look at the other side of the road, it's almost the same thing, you got fire station, you got multifamily apartments, which we don't technically allow, you got the fruit stand over there, we even got a cemetery, a printing company, or a computer company, a, a glass company, and you got toy products also has land on that site. I mean, everything but a mixed use, everything but residential. So we need to really take a look at what we're going to do with our master plan, and I know we want to keep it rural, but look what we've got going on.
I think, Mike, a lot of it is legacy stuff. Things, a lot of what you mentioned have been there for decades and decades. I'm not justifying it, and I do think you're right. But if we change it, are we changing it to the right thing? Right? We can't make a presumption, should it all be...
But, but that's what Giffords and Webster's going to be hired to do.
Correct.
To give their, their...
Professional...
Professional opinion based on the research and what they already do in other communities.
Correct.
Because if you take a ride along Van Dyck from Detroit all the way up to the Thom, other than your older areas, and I'm talking back in the 30s, 40s, you'll, like Elma, for example, you're driving through residential, but everywhere else it's all commercial. You know, again, I think, I think they should conduct this study for our master plan, and the residents should be able to have their input as far as what they want to see.
So, I mean, I encourage the Plan Commission, and I am happy to see it was, Tremblay that did kind of start this, and I know that Tremblay and I did go for a ride with a couple of the residents in the community and kind of looked at what was going on, it was an eye-opener. You know, not just over here, but in our industrial quarter or two, with some of the issues we got down there. So, I mean, I encourage the Plan Commission to take a look at it, and we have a, item on the agenda, possibly get our board to approve some funding, they have Gifford and Webster headed off, so I'll make the motion to approve...
Gifford and Webster?
Yeah, Gifford and Webster to go ahead and do a master plan update for total cost, total project cost not to exceed $11,750.
Support.
Can anybody check with Rhonda, see if we have funds? I know we have that other item on the agenda, I suppose we could take it from there.
What item?
That's a good question, Susan. This is, I didn't expect this tonight. I'm glad he did it, because it definitely provides the scope, but I didn't know about, that doesn't seem out of line to me, but you have to have the money to do it.
Well, let's put a low, maybe a lower number on it currently, and then we can get more funding approved if it goes over. At least we can get it moving, you know, so we're not delaying it another month or so.
Do contingent upon having a money, checking with Rhonda?
Yeah, we could do that.
Contingent as presented.
Fund balance, I mean, that's one of the items on it, our fund balance increased by 32% this year. So there's money available, but it's, what we got budgeted, and that's the reason why our, our fund balance is doing so well, because we, I think we've been running a pretty good budget. And this is not a good reason, I guess it is a good reason not to change that, but I know the funds are there, but yeah, we can do a contingent upon Rhonda can find it. I'll make a motion, go ahead and approve to have Gifford and Webster do a master plan update, work with the Planning Commission on a master plan update, and the board to, board feedback. Contingent upon that we have the funds not to exceed $11,750 by Rhonda's approval.
Or.
Or by DiGiorgio. Did you get that, Amory? Okay. If there's no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Boys?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Guys got work to do, the Planning Commission, so. You look lost.
No, I'm not lost at all. I think we've got, we've got a, an effort to proceed with.
Okay. Moving on, item 7, efforts are Plan Commission recommendation, so, I'm sorry, this is going to be an appointment to the ZBA. So the Planning Commission made a recommendation to appoint Jared Vincent to the ZBA to reap, to fill the unexpired term of Mike Tremblay until 11/20/24. Make that motion, motion to appoint Jared Vincent to fill unexpired term of Mike Tremblay to the ZBA until 11/20/24.
Support.
Or by DiGiorgio. Any, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brad?
Yes.
Yes.
Boys?
Yes.
Yes.
DiGiorgio? Yes.
Move on to item 7G, which is our fund balance pre-audit numbers. Missing, missing mine.
This is what we have, top, 59, this is pre-audit, 59, $598,000.
Where's mine?
I just made notes on the other side that a few things, maybe around the buildings that we could use that for our building is, this building is really suffering, and these are just some ideas I threw out.
Was that, you made that right? We're making those suggestions, or is that Rhonda?
Well, she, she and I talked about, she also suggested, she told me either, this hallway needs some work.
So I, yeah.
Bathrooms are in bad shape.
I did put the suggestions in some kind of a chronological order, which I think would be of the most important to do. First, I think that utilities, for sure, definitely need to be worked on, with the restroom being number one, we do have a leaky sink and faucets that aren't working correctly. But we have a 32% increase in our fund balance. Rhonda did make some mention, I guess with discussion with you, that maybe it's a possibility now that we're doing, that we're doing pretty good in our fund balance, it increased by 32%, which is $595,000 over the last year, that maybe it's time to put a little bit more money into the building that needs a lot of work. So there was some suggestions either by you and Rhonda together, whatever, but I put them in kind of an order, but I don't know what I did with my, my papers, so. I would...
These are just ideas I threw out. You know, even the rugs out in the hall are just so dirty, and they can't be cleaned, so.
You get your financial accounting manager that tells you to spend some money, then I think that's the time to spend some money, so we, and I, I was thinking about if we could just cap it, even though we did $595,000 as in the, from last year to this year, I think maybe we would cap it at 1,000, get bids on a lot of the stuff, like the painting, the caulking, the bathrooms. What else is in there? There's a few other things. Carpet, I think.
Carpet, even the floors.
Right, but I, I would say, look at trying to do some of those repairs and price not to exceed $1,000. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, we've, we've made some tough decisions along the way in the past three, four years, where we, you know, were able to save some money, we've been chipping away.
Clean up a lot of things where we were losing a lot of money.
Exactly.
More important.
You know, we got our, our water, our water fund, we straightened that out, we haven't borrowed any money from the general fund to pay the water in the past four months, five months.
It's actually sitting with 300, 200, 300,000?
About 300,000, so, again, we made some tough decisions, but it's paying off, and we're starting to have seen some being in the black. And I totally agree, a lot of things around here need to be done, I mean, we have, we only could afford half a parking lot last year, and now we saved up enough money to do the other half, that needs to be done. This building is awfully old and falling apart, and I don't see it on the list here, but the treasurer's office getting very small for two people to be in there all the time.
Big-headed.
So I think...
You're looking for an expansion?
Just a little bit, not asking for my own office, but just a little bigger, I mean, we don't have any room in there, and the township's grown, so, so.
Why don't we put a dollar amount?
We have to come up with a list.
Yeah, come up with a list first, and then try to get bids, right?
Prioritize.
And the things, yeah, prioritize, maybe we have a budget meeting one day and prioritize all this, all these issues, and then...
You can get the suggestions from the employees, they're here all the time, they, they see the, all the stuff that needs to be done, get the suggestions, and Mike, you made a point, prioritize it, and start knocking it out.
Okay. So we'll bring it back then. Okay. All right, and we'll just discuss that later on. I don't even think we have to have, no, that was just basically for informational purposes only, I think it was.
Yep.
And move on, item 7, H, Chief's ready.
So in your board packet, you have Michael Cushum's application, I'm looking for approval to hire Michael Cushum full-time to the EMT, the medic position for the fire department. You did sponsor Mike through EMT and fire, so we're now sponsoring him for medic at OCC.
Chief, did we get a regular application on him?
We do have a regular one, other than his resume and the one that you have.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a regular application. He's also gone through the background check, he's also done his physical pass, and actually today, one of the requirements that we do have within six months is a CPAT, OPAT, which is a physical agility, which he passed today.
Did that today where?
OCC. Actually, there was five of them that went today.
Yeah, I'd like to know his age, you know, and stuff, I mean, you're not telling me right now, but I mean, I don't have any of that information.
You can't ask that.
Well, the date of birth or something, it should be on the application. Well, I'm not telling you to answer it to me, but I want to...
Yeah, I'm not going to, but we, we have all that information.
I don't even have his address, is what I'm saying.
We have his driver's license, we have his dress.
It was on here, we cut it.
Age. We gave, I gave you the basic, generic version of what his resume was.
Did he get a certification on June 10th?
He did. I was there. We had two that actually graduated. One is already on the department.
Right.
Because we had hired him a couple months prior to that. So he's actually filling the last spot of the EMT to medic position, so we're doing great on that. Family man, he's actually looking to move into the township also, so, which we all know is going to be a little tough.
Can I ask the chief a question?
Sure.
You mentioned that he's full-time. When you hire him, what, what does full-time entail? Days, times? Where does he fit on a...
So he puts into the regular shift as any other full-time duty medic, as he's going through the program. So right now, we have a program, we start him off on 40 hours a week, we see how far along they go. That could be anywhere from four weeks to eight weeks. That could be anywhere from four weeks to eight weeks that we train him. There's a lot, we are getting, um, not as seasoned, um, people as we'd like. So we created the program about forty to eighty hours where they could, they're here every day or the days that we see fit, forty hours a week. From that point, he's going to transition to duty work. Uh, I believe he'll be going on B shifts, so no different than anybody else. He'll work a day, he'll be off a day, work a day, off a day, work and then off for four on the Kelly system.
And we get him in forty hours for the week then?
We get him forty hours right now until we get him through what we've created is the initial program. He has qualifications that he has to meet for us on our side. We have to make sure that he's proficient at that. And then once he's proficient at that, then we switch him over to actual shift work where he will be permanent.
Thank you.
Three of them are starting mid-August in this class, in the paramedic class also. So he will be going to school, which typically that program is Monday and Wednesday. So if he is working on those days and he is on shift, he's required to go to school and he's required to report back to duty until he leaves the next morning.
Motion?
Make a motion. We, um, hire Michael Cushum as a full-time firefighter, paramedic.
I'll second.
Yeah, he is, he's not a paramedic.
He, he would be the EMT.
EMT program.
Okay. EMT to paramedic.
Second by Smith. There's no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, chief. Let's move on to add item, John, and I apologize for adding this, um, this whole construction project that's been going on. This is our dust control. On the north side, if you have not traveled the north side, I would not recommend that you would travel to north side. If you do have to go north, there's going to be, you're going to find yourself trying to find some way to get north. And the issue we've got is a lot of people are taking campground, thirty-three mile road, um, Gould Road, these are all dirt roads, the thirty-five mile road, so on and so forth. Um, I've had the chief sit in on the last few, um, last couple of MDOT meetings. He's been, also been in touch with, uh, one of the project engineers. These people didn't even know they were detouring traffic down dirt roads. This is the state of Michigan. They had it scheduled, uh, I've been trying to get Evelyn Road reconstructed since the last detour that the state of Michigan has put on it and I finally had county, um, approve to go ahead and have Evelyn Road reconstructed from McKay Road west of Van Dyke because it was so beat up from the last detour. They scheduled to do it on July seventh. The detour was scheduled to start July ninth. I says, can you please wait until the detour started? They said there's, they just assumed, continue with their schedule. Um, so they actually had two shutdowns that were going on because the county and the state of Michigan didn't even communicate with each other. Um, they decided to shut down the project on Evelyn Road because they seen that they were trying to flag traffic to one lane that was all northbound, M-53 traffic, which was almost impossible to do. So needless to say, it's been really hard to communicate with people. I don't know if it's because they're sitting in their desk or what the case is, but with what we've got going on out here, we don't even have an east-west corridor that can travel straight through. It's all different, you know, jogs in and out. I mean, I think our closest west-north corridor is, it's got to be like, uh, LaPierre Road because Rochester Road doesn't go through, Dequina Road doesn't go through, Mount Road doesn't go through. And the same thing on the east side, unless you go down to K-Pac, where you had to jump on K-Pac at a certain area. So our roads are getting really torn up. We got residential houses, these people live real close to these roads. We're getting probably years with the traffic on them in a week's time that we would not normally see. The dust has been terrible. I'm trying to get MDOT to come to pay for some of the money. It's a state of Michigan issue. They're, they have agreed to spend some money on it, they just haven't said how much and I can't be guaranteed how much I'm going to get reimbursed, if any at all. But in the meantime, I can't keep calling them and playing this game with them and not getting answers while the people that live on these roads are suffering. We do have in our budget, we do have a road maintenance program. I'm not a hundred percent sure what's in there, but for these reasons, and I don't want to use our allocation for our extra dust treatment on roads for a project that the state of Michigan should be paying for, but at this time, I don't have much choice. So I'm looking to get, I had brine treatment put down, they did grade, uh, and county did pay to have, uh, or they did grade from thirty-two mile road to thirty-four mile road on campground, which was really in bad shape. And then they did, um, Gould Road from thirty-four mile road to thirty-five mile road and then then thirty-five mile road, uh, east of, east of Van Dyke, basically from Peters Drive to Van Dyke. And then after they graded them, I mean, it just turns into a dust bowl. You couldn't see your hand in front of your face if anybody's, I travel the roads, I try to go down at least once a day to see what the conditions are and, and see what new, things may be going on. And the chief makes his rounds out there and he wants to know what the detours are and, you know, where he's going to send his emergency vehicles. The roads were very, very bad today. So we did get a, a brine treatment, cost thirty-one hundred dollars to do a little over three miles. The road is twenty-nine cents a mile. Let me see what I got here. It's twenty, twenty-nine cents a gallon and three thousand gallons does about a mile. So we did a little, about three and a half miles and we were at the, it's going to cost us three thousand and forty-five dollars. Tomorrow, they're looking the same thing on the east side of the road as they're doing it, on the east side of the township as they're doing on the west side. They're taking McKay Road to, um, McKay Road, they're taking Scotch Settlement Road and Boardman Road on the east side and they're all conversion and those roads are getting really tore up. And then county was out there looking at them today and says, we're going to be grading them, um, and after we grade them, it's going to be a dust bowl. We got dry, really dry weather coming for the next week, not very much rain. Um, so it's going to be recommended that we try to chloride those roads. We do get two free treatments a year from McComb County. We had our first treatment was done in May and our second one isn't until August, so. But they do have this program out there, um, for us to go ahead and pick up on additional chloride or brine treatments if needed. And there's no, I mean, I, I can't say that this is about this, most of the time we would need it, then anyway, you know, so. But I would look to, I don't have the authority to go ahead and approve more than five thousand.
Emergencies, right?
Emergencies.
Actually, not more than two thousand. Emerg, up to, or emergencies.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I don't mind starting to turn some of these calls over to somebody else and my phone's ringing off the hook. If you look at the Facebook and the Nextdoor pages, there's a lot going on. Frank lives down these dirt roads. I live on a dirt road, not affected by the construction right now, but I know the, I know the issues about living on a dirt road. But I wanted to try to get something, approve something not to exceed maybe seven thousand on the, on the.
Been a lot of complaints, like Mike said, on Facebook, Nextdoor, um, people.
They don't know who to turn to.
Driving down a dirt road, it's like driving down a bunch of potholes.
How long did they say this is going to last?
Probably till the twenty-third, I think.
Believe the cutoff, hopefully, I believe, don't quote me, it's the twenty-third.
July?
August. No. Wishful thinking.
Mike, with the amount of money you're suggesting, is that going to cover you that long?
Well, if they get us, it gets us through this stretch is what it basically boils down to. But I'm not really happy that the township's got to step up to the plate to take care of a state, uh, project. And where's the county's funding? I know county said that they're, obviously they're using their grading and their grading in roads and something that they normally wouldn't have to be doing. They're going to follow up and they're going to follow up with water because this brine is all activated by water. It needs to have water moisture to go ahead and work. So they're going to follow up with water. So they're doing everything they can, but it seems like the state of Michigan's kind of stalling up. But I don't, I'm not really happy that the taxpayers and township or Bruce are got to pay for a brine treatment or something that the state of Michigan should be responsible for. But I'm not, I can't continue to argue with them and try to get funding out of them because it's going to take a little bit of time, but I will be going after them for a refund. And I have gotten a word that I did just submit an invoice and they can't say that they're going to give me it all back, but they're going to give me a portion of it back. Because they have a posted detour sign of where the detour is going to go, which would be Gould Road and thirty-five mile road, but campground's not in a detour even though people are taking it.
Of course.
So they're probably going to reject the funding that's going to be, um, used for campground road. But I am, I am not just going to forget about it. I'm going to try to, you know, that, you all know me well enough that I've worked at this township four years, that I've always gone after whatever money we can get, so.
What they didn't realize is that campground is the detour. You cannot get to thirty-four mile road.
Right.
Unless you take campground. So everybody's now cutting down thirty-three campground.
Or thirty-two.
Thirty-four Gould, thirty-five.
Or they're getting off at thirty-two. A lot of times, M-53 is backed up all the way to thirty-two.
They didn't realize that.
Confused too.
Right. And actually, wasn't there a fatality the other day over there?
Where?
Thirty-two and campground.
Oh, that's it.
So, I mean, I'm, if I could, I would make a motion to go ahead and approve to have brine treatments not to treat, uh, brine treatment done not to exceed a price of seven thousand dollars. I will work on getting, um, as much reimbursed from the state of Michigan as I possibly can. But that's what.
Support.
Board by DeGiorgio. Does anybody else have any questions?
Mike, can I ask you? And Amory had asked, but I didn't hear the answer to it. How long does a brine treatment last for us? And will it get us through to the twenty-third without having to do a second?
So what's nice about the brine is it, if, basically, it works off of moisture. It's just salt water is what it is. And salt attracts water. I don't know if you've had, have you spilled any of your, like, salt from your softener and, uh, softener and see the moisture kind of, so it attracts moisture. But what they do is when they're going to put it down and they come back and activate it with water, we get a light rain without it washing the brine away, it'll lock down like this. And that's why some of the roads get, you know, because it's all limestone, it'll be like a hard surface or a, a hard pan, which will stay that way until probably we get a really heavy rain and we start getting potholes and the potholes get water in them. Every time a tire hits it, it washes more dirt out. So we don't get any rain and we can get it locked down and road's going to stay that way for quite a long time. But we do have a lot of traffic with eighteen-wheelers that are going down these roads that are not normally, those tires do a lot of skidding and stuff, which can kind of continues to tear it up. But I mean, if we don't get any, any heavy rains or downpours, I mean, with the traffic, I can't really say, but I mean, we should get seven to ten days, maybe a little bit longer out of it, possibly, you know, maybe longer, you know, so.
Are we looking at another treatment besides what you're asking for now?
No, that's all I'm asking. Well, no, I'm looking to do the east side of the town, the east side of the township's going to have to be done too, and they're looking at grading that tomorrow. I mean, I can, do you have any idea what the dust is like on, after they, you get done grading one of these roads, you need to, you need to go out and check it out because you're saying it's like, oh, how can these people even live? I mean, their house is just covered by a cloud.
Right, and it is not their fault.
No, it's not their fault.
Okay.
Just because they live on a dirt road and it's a rural community, but I understand it. And then, you know, why are people that don't live in the dirt roads paying for chloride treatment for people that are, that's what's coming out?
It is, but.
Yeah.
Well, it's not, in my opinion, it's not fair that the county owns these roads and they expect the cost share.
He would try to go after them.
We don't collect tax dollars on, on roads, but the county does.
Right.
So why should we have to pay a cost share?
In the meantime, these people are, are stuck with this mess.
Right.
Yeah.
Are the people calling the county and state?
Oh, yeah, I've given them a number. I figured that out, so, definitely.
Yeah, they were inundated when me and Mike talked to a couple of the MDOT people with phone calls. Like overwhelmed.
But they do answer that one, Kim McLean? That's off to her, she answers her phone every time they call?
She does. She's been working very hard and diligently on this project. She knows, unfortunately, somebody somewhere else dropped the ball.
So anyways, we've got a motion to approve up to seven thousand, I think supported by DeGiorgio. If there's no other discussion, can we get a roll call, please, Amory?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
DeGiorgio?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Um, I guess it's end of our meeting, we'll open up for communications. Hey, why don't we let Tris go first?
Okay, I'll go first.
Okay.
I have a couple of things. I'll start with the one I'm a little concerned about, which was a dog running around in our building. I was wondering maybe we could address having animals in the building, which kind of concerned me when we were having a meeting and the dog is approaching me. So if we could address that, I don't know how we address that, but maybe we should address that. Second thing though, this one is for you, Mike. I happened to be at a function a few weeks ago and your name was brought up. A couple that was at this function said, hey, do you know Mike Philbrook? Oh, yes, he's a supervisor for Bruce Township. Yes, of course. They had some issue on thirty-three mile with a house that apparently had, we've had issues in the past with blight, but at this point, had a tree that had fallen in a backyard, destroyed a, a pool. I don't know if that's sounding familiar to you.
Oh, yeah.
And they were having some issues and they said, we called Mike and he got that taken care of in no time flat. And they were very happy that you did that. They were just ecstatic.
Okay.
So I thought it was worth mentioning that we have residents out there that were happy with the job you did on that blight house.
Great. I didn't think it was, um, completely done. I think that they did remove the tree, the pool's been drained, I think there's still an insurance issue out there, but I was waiting for it to be one hundred percent completely done before I talk.
I can tell you they're happy. They back up to that house and they had said that they were very happy and very pleased with how quickly it got handled.
Thanks. Any, anymore?
That's all I have for now.
You looking for more? Uh, we have a blood drive on August eighth, Thursday, here at the township hall between nine and three. And tax bills went out a couple of weeks ago. Uh, people have been paying diligently. You still can pay them the same way as the bank. Put an envelope in the drop box, pay them online or come and see us personally and aim deliver it to us. And those are due September fourteenth. All I have.
Susan? Thanks, chief.
Yeah, I just want to point out that we have a new artist whose artwork is hung in the boardroom here. Uh, some out in the hallway too. It's David Miller, a local artist.
Next payment.
You got that too?
Also one.
That's Elizabeth Miller's husband, I think. They look really nice.
More out in the hallway. Uh, I also want to remind everyone that the primary is coming up on August sixth and we have early voting down at Washington Township from, uh, July twenty-seventh through August fourth, eight, three to, eight, three to four-thirty down at the township hall of Van Dyke in Washington. Primary, don't split your ticket.
Amory?
Nothing.
Chief?
I'll say thank you.
Is there already? Thank God, as I did have a conversation with John Paterneck from Armada. Um, obviously, as you guys all know, back in the day, they did run a parallel twelve-inch Obviously, as you guys all know, back in the day, they did run a parallel 12-inch water main from our 96-inch water main out of our meter pit to service Armada for their industrial district, in which we all know that the village of Romeo's annex is a big portion of their industrial district. So now looking to what they needed, what they can do with their 12-inch water main that they did pay for. They are looking to expand their water district and move it more inward towards the village. So they wanted to know what our thoughts were on that. And I says, well, geez, I mean, said, I can talk it over with the board and discuss it with the board, but I said, I don't see no, no reasons why you shouldn't bale it to. You know, so he's going to put something together and he doesn't know where it's going to really go, but I mean, it's their water main, they did basically pay for it. We, we charge for, we will be charging for taps and usages off of it, kind of like we're doing right now, but paid to have it installed, so.
Now, Mike, I am remembering quite a few years ago that Armada Township put up $50,000 for something. Is that the same thing? It had to do with water or some kind of line? I thought it was sewer, to be honest with you, but it was a line that we were running down 33 mile and the township had put up $50,000 for some.
It was more than that for the water.